This is the meeting of the 18th council on Thursday, 23rd November. First of all, there are no apologies for our lack of honour for all present attendants at the meeting. On the two confirmation of the agenda, I would like to add one item to the agenda at the end, which is an acknowledgement of the Cardiff procedure. And with that, addition to the agenda, I'll move that being again confirmed.
Your worship, I'm just wondering about number four. There's recommendations in that report that pertain to individuals and I'm just wondering whether other members feel comfortable discussing that item in public or whether it would be better to move it to non-public so as to enable discussion.
Okay, you decide your motion from your to move it to non-public and if you're a councillor, I'll make sure.
Well, perhaps you could include it in your motion because this is speaking to your motion.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so if you are happy to...
Okay, well, given the fact that I'm being wrong and giving them passion, I will move that being again confirmed with the addition of the extra item that I had mentioned and moving item four into non-public. Is there any further discussion, councillor?
Could we not just have the discussion in public as per the paper since there's nothing in the paper that actually requires to be a non-public and follow that up with a non-public discussion? If people want to talk about things outside of what's in the paper?
Well, I sense that that would be rather painful because we can't... well, I think the point that councillor McTavish is making is that there may be some areas where councillors would be feel constrained in a way of discussing public, which is the purpose of that.
Which is why I'm quite happy to have a section where we are unconstrained.
I don't think there's a section about... councillor.
I'm just making it... I just need to move that and withdraw before I have those discussions.
I'm concerned that this sets a very unfortunate precedent in that if any councillors feel constrained about anything, they can wipe a public piece off the agenda and have it put into non-public. I don't believe that it's appropriate process-wise. I don't believe that it's appropriate in this case. And I'm very concerned that we have already, in the two meetings that we've already had, things in non-public for absolutely no good reason. I will be voting against.
As long as you want, councillor.
Your worship, I wonder if the way forward is to go into non-public, have that discussion, and then having had that discussion, come back out into public for the paper itself.
Look, I don't see the importance of that because we're going to have to turn to the same discussion. And I think that we're perfectly capable of having a discussion in non-public and then bringing that along and moving that. I take... I'll see how the councillor votes, but I think it's a legitimate move to take on my idea of non-public, given that. Now councillor Thompson.
I'm just... my concern is more general principle, won't I? I'm torn about whether or not it should go into closed session at this point in time given that the names have been revealed. I think that where names are being notified for appointment to council, that's one thing. Where councillors being asked to approve a set of names, it seems to me quite inappropriate that they should come in the first place in open session. I don't know whether in this particular instance, there is some reason that I don't understand as to why they'd come in that manner. It may be to do with the legislation, for all I know, but it just seems... yeah, it puts councillors in a very difficult position if they did have a concern.
So, I'm going to clarify, what's the sense that councillors are in a position to...
It's just the principle of moving... the principle of bringing names for appointment to council in open session means it just seems a wrong thing to do. That's really... if they're just there for noting, it's entirely appropriate. But if we're being asked to make a decision on it and that involves debating, then it just seems wrong. And I'm really questioning, was there a reason that pertain to this particular piece of legislation that has come this way?
Well, I can't answer that now, but I note that the recommendation on this report is that councillor points. So councillors are being asked to make a decision and I think it's a legitimate point of view to argue that some councillors have been quite feeling constrained about what they might say in an open session. So, whether I'll agree with that or not. So, are there any further discussions? Right.
Well, just to explain my view, and I think councillor Thompson has done it very well. I mean, normally in the course of matters, I'm a strong advocate to have any discussions that we are able to have in public. But I think for the purposes of protecting the privacy and the dignity of the individuals who have been brave enough to put their names forward for this process, I think that it is important not to have discussions about their... or otherwise of their appointment in public. I think that it is something that is better to have in non-public so as no-one feels constrained. I personally don't know many of these members. Well, I'm obviously an exception, so I don't have a view on their... or otherwise of their appointment, but I would like to feel that we could have that discussion without having hurting members of the public who have, as I said, bravely put their names forward for appointment.
Well, I'm going to put it to the vote and just to clarify, this is... noting that round five may be modified.
Anybody to move?
Moved councillor Noon, second to councillor Pete. Discussion. There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Hushed, carried. Item six is interim delegations. Ian Sandy.
This is councillor See. It's giving a delegation to the new grants, so they're able to act tomorrow to hear the grants that are going ahead tomorrow. That needs to be considered. They're just confirming the hearings committee delegations until the full delegations manual comes back to council in January for consideration.
Any further questions? Someone like to move it? Moved councillor Staines, second to councillor McTavish. Discussion. Councillor Vanc.
Regarding the community board commissioners which may be appointed in addition to the core, is that a paid position or is that just a voluntary?
If I understand the question, are you asking if a community board member serves on a panel, are they remunerated?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Right, so we move the seconded. All those in favour, please say aye. Hushed, carried. Item seven... Sitting back.
Don't do this in private.
This is a pretty simple matter that I brought to... well, actually, I was reminded by councillor that there are occasions, specifically LGNZ Conference or sister city trips to Shanghai when both myself and the deputy mayor are away, and there is provision for an acting deputy mayor. So, I am suggesting, recommending that councillor Noon be the acting deputy mayor. And would anyone like to ask any questions? You're going to move?
I'm happy to second.
Right, I'll move. Take it to councillor Staines. Any discussion? There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Hushed, carried. Right, we're on to item eight.
Next to him.
Yeah. I'll just get... yeah, yeah, he's there, he's right there. Item eight is the chief executive appointment and it says it will be a verbal report from me, well, very little need for much of a verbal report, except to say that I was delighted on Monday to be able to announce the appointment of Dr Sue Bidroes as our incoming CEO. We have been appreciating the quality and the quantity of Dr Bidroes's work for three years now and her capacity as general manager. And I know that she will contribute enormously in her new role. And I note that the appointment was received with acclaim by council, by the staff and by the wider community. So, well, I'll give that up. Here's a permit. I'd like to offer the councillors the opportunity, if anyone wants to speak. I think we spoke with our votes. Right, the last item was the one that I added and this is the acknowledgement, and you're not sitting back, you might just stay there. I just want to acknowledge the departure of... or acknowledge Dr Alders and his departure. Paul, you came here like a breath of fresh air with a steel edge and you have achieved an enormous amount whilst you've been here. But I think more importantly though, you've had the staff achieve a tremendous amount and that's very much to your credit. You gained the confidence, the respect, the affection of staff and elected members alike and of the community. And I know that you gave of your all professionally and socially. At a personal level, I have very much enjoyed and gained from working with you immensely. I'll miss your work ethic, your advice, your banter and your wisdom. Thank you. And you leave with this council's gratitude and lasting affection. So, I wish your family and yourself all the very best in Cardiff. And can I assure you that if it all turns to Custard, Sue will find a place for you back here. Thank you. Can I give councillors the opportunity to speak? Councillor Staines.
With Paul arriving here, we had high expectations of him and I suppose I did as well. But what I did not expect to have a chief executive come into the city that has actually grown me as an individual and that I rank amongst some of the very best leaders that I've met in my career. Paul is someone who has the ability to see what needs to be done very clearly, but he does it by understanding and listening. Great leaders do that. Great leaders understand where they wanted to go and they take people with them. And I found Paul to be a great leader in my view and I've learnt a lot from him, particularly in the economic development area, an area that I thought I knew a little bit about through my history with Fisher and Michael. So, Paul, I would miss you immensely, but I do look forward to working with Sue and I'm sure she'll pick up the reins where you've left off and we'll continue the journey.
Councillor McTavish.
Your worship, it's with a great deal of sadness that I rise to acknowledge the departure, Paul. I think like Chris, we did have high expectations. We all knew that you came with acknowledgement of the amazing work that you had done back in Wales. But like Chris, you have well exceeded my own personal expectations and I think the expectations of this community in what you have given to Dunedin. And I think what has surprised me and heartened me the most is the amount that you have poured your heart and soul into the work that you have offered here in Dunedin. I think for someone that has come from a far distant place, I didn't expect to see someone offer so much and pour so much of yourself into this role and I think that Dunedin has benefited from that immensely. I think what you have given the city over the past two years is hope and that is an incredible gift to give a city. When you arrived, I think there were a lot of us who were feeling that the challenges that we were facing were nigh on insurmountable and what we needed to do in terms of cutting expenses and cutting back capital expenditure was a mountain that was incredibly daunting. And you have made the process of climbing that mountain and hopefully starting to come down the other side of that mountain not only possible, but also I think quite enjoyable. And that is an incredible thing to have achieved. I personally have learnt a lot from the work that you have done to build a team here at the council and not only within your own staff, but I think that the manner in which you interacted with elected members built a team out of the previous council in a way that I could not imagine possible really when I first took office. I have appreciated the courage and fearlessness with which you have approached the tasks that we have asked of you. And I think that over and above everything that I have appreciated in terms of what you have offered, it is the fact that you have conducted yourself in a manner that has asked us all to improve the way that we conduct ourselves as elected members and encouraged us to be the best that we can be for the city. And that's a legacy which I certainly appreciate and I will be carrying forward into the work that I do over the next three years. And I look forward to visiting you in Cardiff at some point.
Councillor Thompson.
Yes, Paul, I'm going to miss you immensely and I just... I want to take some credit for your being here. There was a grave danger that you were going to miss the shortlist appointment. I can... there's an extraordinary prejudice against Welshmen, I've discovered. There was a view amongst the selection panel, I can reveal this now, that one high-level appointment from Wales in a tree near Trinian's quite enough. But coming from another oppressed minority, Southland, I spoke up on your behalf and the rest is history. I think one of the real strengths that you've brought to this role is your easy manner with people and the way in which you have been seen by staff as part of them as well as their leader. I think that's been... I twice during the election campaign, found myself talking to people at public meetings, both staff members, both of whom were working in areas of council that had had some significant attention and both of them independently commented about the fact that when there was bad news to be conveyed, you came and conveyed it, you didn't send somebody else. And I think that is both a mark of your ability as a leader and also your quality as a person. I think it's a tremendous lesson to leave behind and I think we are much the richer for that. Like Jinty, I hope that I find myself in Wales at some stage with the test match. I expect a confirmation ticket to the Millennium Stadium, so please organise that if you wouldn't mind. And we wish you all the very best. I know you're going to do a fantastic job over there, you've done a fantastic job here. I will miss you, we will miss you and I really do wish you the very best and I know you're going to have a great time with the challenge there, just as you've had a great time with the challenge here, so thank you.
Councillor Bezir.
Yeah, Paul, I endorse everything everybody else has said. I think that you came in at a time when the city was desperately looking for some firm leadership. I've been around long enough in this council to know that you provided that leadership as a CEO better than certainly than any other CEO that I've been associated with over the years. The sad thing for me was, apart from the fact that you're leaving, was that you came at a time when we were quite desperate and I don't think that we've seen the best of Paul Alders. He came at a time when he was looking for, or we were looking for cuts, we were looking for further funds and Paul provided that in a way that was dignified and he was able to do that without causing too much disruption. It would have been wonderful to have you around for a few more years to be able to get us through that period because I think there's a lot more to Paul Alders than just cutting back on the funds and looking at what we were doing in a way that in some ways could be perceived as negative. I think there's a lot of positive aspects of your leadership that we will not see unfortunately. The Cardiff City Council will get the benefit of that. I can assure councillor Thompson that...
...is history. I think one of the real strengths that you've brought to this role is your easy manner with people and the way in which you have been seen by staff as part of them as well as their leader. I think that's been... I twice during the election campaign, found myself talking to people at public meetings, both staff members, both of whom were working in areas of council that had had some significant attention and both of them independently commented about the fact that when there was bad news to be conveyed, you came and conveyed it, you didn't send somebody else. And I think that is both a mark of your ability as a leader and also your quality as a person. I think it's a tremendous lesson to leave behind and I think we are much the richer for that. Like Jinty, I hope that I find myself in Wales at some stage with the test match. I expect a confirmation ticket to the Millennium Stadium, so please organise that if you wouldn't mind. And we wish you all the very best. I know you're going to do a fantastic job over there, you've done a fantastic job here. I will miss you, we will miss you and I really do wish you the very best and I know you're going to have a great time with the challenge there, just as you've had a great time with the challenge here, so thank you.
Councillor Bezir.
Yeah, Paul, I endorse everything everybody else has said. I think that you came in at a time when the city was desperately looking for some firm leadership. I've been around long enough in this council to know that you provided that leadership as a CEO better than certainly than any other CEO that I've been associated with over the years. The sad thing for me was, apart from the fact that you're leaving, was that you came at a time when we were quite desperate and I don't think that we've seen the best of Paul Alders. He came at a time when he was looking for, or we were looking for cuts, we were looking for further funds and Paul provided that in a way that was dignified and he was able to do that without causing too much disruption. It would have been wonderful to have you around for a few more years to be able to get us through that period because I think there's a lot more to Paul Alders than just cutting back on the funds and looking at what we were doing in a way that in some ways could be perceived as negative. I think there's a lot of positive aspects of your leadership that we will not see unfortunately. The Cardiff City Council will get the benefit of that. I can assure councillor Thompson that Paul has already told me that he's got seats for me if I go to Cardiff. But like everybody else, Paul, I certainly wish you all the best for the future. I know you've got a great future where you're going. We look... we will be looking to see a bright light shining in that district for many years to come and all the best for the future.
Councillor Noon.
Thank you, worship. Just on behalf of everybody, I just want to reiterate the positive things that have been said to you, Paul, today. I think the flavour and style that you've brought and imposed on the city is something that we will value for a long time. I think also we need to acknowledge that, you know, the fact that you moved your family from one side of the world to the other and had them settled here for quite some time was something that we will appreciate as well. And I think we always knew that it was fortunate that you chose Dunedin for a couple of years and as others have said, we would like to have had you for longer. But I think we always knew that there would be a calling for you to head back to your homeland and lead Cardiff in a similar style that you fled this city, so thank you very much.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Paul. I had the pleasure of meeting up with Paul on one of his first days in Dunedin and taking him for a wee tiki tour to sell Dunedin to Paul. And I was utterly impressed from the first moment when I met him at High Street where I said, "Oh, we're just going up to Mornington to have a coffee" and he said, "Oh, that's where Chris Staines lives." Anyone who can find out that sort of research on the internet is pretty amazing. Then he started talking to me about Southern Salt Lake, a place dear to my heart but not again that most people would have any familiarity from Cardiff about. Paul, reflections of you as someone who's been exceedingly calm when some of us probably have been thinking quite the opposite. You've been measured, you've been utterly discreet, you've been sociable and you've been tolerant, but you've just gone ahead and done the job without any song or being on the front page of the ODT or anything untoward or bad and it's just that calmness of just being resolved that's been reassuring to all of us through a really difficult and quite a high change at the time. So, congratulations for that. Best wishes to Jane and the children. I hope that they'll enjoy being back together as a family with you and wish you all the best. And I'm happy to go to a soccer match, I don't care about rugby so much. I'd just love to be at the Millennium Stadium sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, look, Paul, I'd just like to say the same thing as everyone else, but I haven't worked with you for as long, but I've enjoyed any occasions that I have had anything to do with you. I just did notice today, there's a sale starting at Cap Mandu, you can buy raincoats. You will need one, yeah.
Thanks very much.
Councillor Kelvin.
I'd like, and I agree with all the other councillors, Paul, but I would like you to pass on our heartfelt gratitude to Jane. You told me that, if I recall properly, some years ago, you were heading for an academic life and she said a version of, "Man up, Paul, go and get a real job, it's time you supported us." We have to be very appreciative that she did notice the proper place for you where you could add value in a really useful fashion and she allowed you to bring your family over here and I would like to express our thanks to her for what she has had to do for you and her family to come here.
Councillor White.
Paul, on behalf of the wider community, I want to thank you. Being new to council, I've only seen you mostly from the outside and in the last two months, the number one conversation that I've heard from people is, "What are we going to do about a CEO?" How frank Paul Alders has been. Number two's being leave benefits, but that's another story. But on the wider community, you've had a huge impact on the city and thank you.
Councillor Prech.
Thank you, your worship. Paul, I'm one of the newcomers, the school of 2013 and if you've given as much in terms of your warm embrace and your information to me as you have to the others, you would have done a terrific job for us even in the short time that we've known you here in a working capacity. But we will cherish that image of you with a wig and a black gown that's possibly not been worn for ever since the 1970s. And you've just got one job now for us to do and that is back in Cardiff to restore the turf at the Millennium Stadium so that we can pack a scrum down. But thank you very much and we wish you all the best for your platoon.
Do you want to hear the speakers? Okay. Paul, I have a small token of our respect and the saying goes, the proverb goes, "When the work of the chisel is finished, a treasure stands upon the land." And your, they say, your treasure is a splendid body of work and achievement.
Really humble to hear those words of kindness and, you know, I've wondered at times whether councillors have quite understood what the ODT once described as a thick Welsh accent. councillors have quite understood what the ODT once described as a thick Welsh accent. So I'm really grateful for you giving me the benefit of the doubt over recent years. You know, I could speak for my family. We've enjoyed every minute of our time here. And for me, at a professional level, this has been a very enriching period in my career. And to a significant degree, that reflects the relationship that I've enjoyed with my employer. You know, we've had to deal with some tricky issues. Diffusing landmines has become something of an in-house speciality in the DCC, but I've no hesitation in saying that against what has been occasionally a challenging backdrop, I've worked with a mayor, a group of councillors that has always treated me with respect and courtesy, and from a chief executive perspective, you really can't ask for much more. I've also worked with a really fantastic group of staff. The work of a chief executive is made much easier if he or she is supported by high-level professionalism among the people he or she employs. And, you know, my view is that the council, on the whole, is well-served by the people who delivers its services day in and day out. And my view also is that, you know, I think it's fair to say that some progress has been made over recent years to tackle some of the big challenges the council has been facing. But I'm the first to acknowledge that there's much, much more that needs to be done. And I have every confidence that the council, this council, this group of members, will make progress over the coming years. And I also have every confidence in my successor to make a huge contribution to the work of the council over the coming years. Talk of continuity, discontinuity, consolidation, it all misses the point. Sue will bring a freshness of perspective that will strengthen the council's ability to meet the challenges it will face in the years ahead. I'm absolutely confident that you've appointed someone who very quickly will become one of New Zealand's foremost local government chief executives. So, me, there's much to be optimistic about, and that's not to understate the challenges that we face. It only remains for me to wish the council the very best, best wishes for the future. Cheers.
Okay, that's the end of the public part of the agenda, so I'll move from the chair for the reasons stated earlier that publicly excluded from the main of the... Second to councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Enticed.